Good evening and welcome to the City of Hayward Planning Commission meeting for April 10th, 2025. We are holding a hybrid meeting with some participants in the council chambers and others who have joined virtually via Zoom. This meeting is being webcast on Comcast TV Channel 15 and live streamed on the city's YouTube channel and on the city website. Per Assembly Bill 2449 and pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, the meeting will include a teleconference location at Starbucks located at 400 East Ocean Avenue in Lompoc, California. Planning Commissioner Member Goodbody will participate via teleconference. The agenda has been posted at the teleconference location and the public will have an opportunity to address the Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order at 7:02 PM. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Allen, would you please call role?
Good evening. Commissioner Franco Clauston, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Present.
Commissioner Hammond?
Present.
Commissioner Lowe?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Present.
Chair Hardy.
Present. So we will now open public comments on any non-agenda items. The Public Comments section provides an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda. The Commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner within established time limits and focused on issues which directly affect the city or are within the jurisdiction of the city. As the Commission is prohibited by state law from discussing items not listed on the agenda, your item will be taken into consideration and may be referred to staff for further action. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a Commission meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attends Commission meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive or per se disruptive to a meeting will not be tolerated. Ms. Allen, do we have any public comments in person or on Zoom?
There are no public commenters.
Commissioner Goodbody, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment at your location?
There aren't in here.
Thank you. I will now close public comments. So item number one tonight is an action item. For this item, the Planning Commission may make a recommendation to City Council. Item 1 PH25015 is a public hearing for the Recommended Fiscal Year 2026 through Fiscal Year 2035 Capital Improvement Program. Does staff have a presentation for this item?
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Alexa Mary, Public Works Director for the city. Staff is pleased to be here this evening to present the city's FY26, FY35 10-Year Capital Improvement Program. The development of the CIP has been a process involving many staff from various departments over the past several months. Public Works and Utilities Team have been managed by Senior Management Analyst Ellie Lowe and the process has been led by Management Analyst Michael Wolney. As always, engineers, planners, and other staff in various divisions and departments have been involved and contributed to the process. Staff recommends that the Commission finds that FY2635 CIP is consistent with the city's 2040 general plan and recommend its approval to council. I now turn this over to Michael Wolney to kick off the staff presentation. By the way, Michael is at City Hall but stayed in his office to make use of his multi-screen setup. Thank you, Michael.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me and see the presentation?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. And do you see the presentation? Okay.
Yes, now we can. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission, members of the public and city staff. My name is Michael Wolney and I am the Management Analyst in the Public Works Department. This is the Fiscal Year 2026 to 2035 Recommended Capital Improvement Program presentation on how projects within the CIP are consistent with the 2040 general plan. Just for reference, the photo that you see here in the background is the completed Phase 1 of the Stack Center, which I'll mention again in some later slides. This is the fifth year that the CIP has been developed in the online Open Gov Stories format. Open Gov Stories is an online budget book development tool designed to increase the user friendliness and ease of navigation within a complex budget. It's also intended to help increase the depth with which community members, council members, and other stakeholders can explore a budget. I will now open up the online book to provide a quick tutorial on how to navigate it. One moment while I switch screens. Okay, can everyone see the CIP webpage on the city's website?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, scrolling down on the CIP webpage, the public will see a blue bar which will take the user to the online version of the CIP. This is the recommended viewing experience for the CIP because it includes a number of interactive tables and charts. If the public would like to view a printable version of the CIP, they can click the second blue bar here to view the entire CIP document in PDF format. There is also a section on the website which includes the Fiscal Year 2025 CIP Semiannual Progress Report where users can view status of current projects. Now I'm going to scroll back up and click the first link to take you to the Open Gov platform. Here you'll see the homepage. If you scroll down, you'll see four main sections of the CIP. First, the Introduction section includes more information about the city's elected officials and organizational chart. Second, the Strategic Priorities includes an overview of the city's strategic priorities and some featured projects that support these priorities. Third, the Explore the Budget section is the heart of the CIP where the public can get key budget insights such as the total proposed budget amounts as well as information on various projects within the CIP. Lastly, the Table of Contents page will allow users to navigate within the CIP, which I'll go over later. First, let's look at Explore the Budget. As you can see, this page summarizes the Fiscal Year 26 budget at a high level. The Recommended Fiscal Year 26 budget is $161 million and the total 10-year budget is at $1.3 billion. Below that section are other key insights such as the total fiscal year 26 general fund transfers to CIP funds, which amount to approximately $3 million. The total fiscal year 26 internal service fees are approximately $3.9 million. And the total identified but unfunded capital needs portion is approximately $709 million. If the public would like to see further details on the projects that comprise these three amounts, they can click the links to the right side that say Click Here to Learn More. Scrolling down, the user can choose either to view the CIP by fund or by category. I'll start by clicking the fund link. Here, the public can see an overview of the city's fund portfolio. If they click down into the table into the carats on the left, the public can view the total recommended budget amounts for specific funds. If the user keeps scrolling down the page, they'll see a description of each fund and every underlying text is a link to a new page that will show the various projects within each fund. For example, if I click on the Fund 210 Gas Tax Fund, I'll be taken to a separate page dedicated to Fund 210 projects. As you can see, I can click on each carrot and it will show a short list of featured projects with each having their own project number and project page. If I scroll down beneath the table, there's also a short list of featured projects that have their own page. For example, if I click on the Fiscal Year 26 Pavement Rehabilitation Project, I will see an image and description of the project along with an overview of revenue sources that contribute to this project as well as the expense budget for this project. Now I'm going to go back to the Explore the Budget category page. And once again, if I click on the Total Budget by Category this time, the public again will see a pie chart with the fiscal year 26 total budget, but this time broken down by category. Just like the fund page, the public will see a table that populates a pie chart and allows the user to see the projects within their total budgets organized by category. If the user continues down the page, they will also see the pages' links for each category. For example, if I click on the Livable Neighborhoods link, I'll see a description of what the category is and then another table and the projects and budgets that are in this category. Similar to viewing by fund, the bottom of this page will also show all of the featured projects within this category. In this case, parks and buildings, traffic calming, pedestrian bicycle improvements, et cetera. Now I'm going to go back to the Explore the Budget page one more time. And I would like to point out two helpful resources. First, starting with appendices. If the public is looking for a specific project budget but aren't sure of how to find this budget, or excuse me, how to find this project, the user can click Appendix A for all project budgets by category. The Appendix A page will show an extended view of every project and its budget. The public can search for keywords using the Control or Command F function. For example, if I wanted to search for pavement, I can click Control F, type in pavement, and then find all projects with the word pavement in the project title. On the other hand, if the user is looking for a specific project description and aren't sure to where to start, the best source would be Appendix B. Going back to the explorer page, I'm going to click Appendix B. On this page, the search functionality is actually built within the table. Again, if we wanted to search for pavement-related projects, I can type in pavement into the project title search bar, click OK, and this table will bring up all projects with the word pavement in the title. The easiest way to reset your search is to refresh your browser like so. If you are ever lost or want to start over, the bottom of every page should have a Table of Context link. When the public opens the Table of Contents, the user will see an overview of the structure of the CIP to links to every single page in the CIP. This is the best way to navigate to a particular section or page quickly. The three main sections featured on the homepage are also here: the Introduction, Strategic Priorities, and Explore the Budget. The other two subsections of the CIP by fund or by project category are also here. This allows the user to view project budgets and descriptions by fund or category like we just went over. The last section, "For Other," shows the appendices as well as the CIP PDF link. The Semiannual Report for Fiscal Year 26 will be linked later this year as projects make progress. That concludes our tour of the online CIP book. I will now return to the presentation. One moment while I switch screens. Okay, and just one more check. You can see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, we can see it.
Great. Thank you so much for confirming. Okay, so this slide provides a snapshot of the Recommended CIP's budget breakdown by project category. As you can see here, the largest portion of the Recommended Fiscal Year 26 budget has been programmed in the Sewer System category in orange. This category encompasses a wide range of projects which support the ongoing replacement and improvement of our utility infrastructure. Projects include our annual sewer line replacement and our Phase 2 improvement project at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. The second largest category is the Livable Neighborhoods category in gray, which includes projects like La Vista Park, the South Hayward Youth and Family Center, median landscaping projects, traffic calming projects, pedestrian and bicycle improvements, and sidewalk projects among others. The amounts shown are the forecasted expenses that are planned for Fiscal Year 26. This slide shows a snapshot of a recommended budget broken down by fund as opposed to category. As you can see here, funds with the largest allocation of the recommended budget are the Water and Sewer System Funds in blue and orange. And the fund with the third-largest budget allocation is Fund 405 for capital projects. Many projects will fall within the Livable Neighborhoods category such as La Vista Park and the Stack Center, which I previously mentioned. The rest of this evening's presentation will focus on demonstrating the proposed CIP's consistency with the Hayward 2040 general plan. For any members of the public who are unfamiliar with the general plan, it's a comprehensive document that contains the goals, policies, and implementation programs intended to guide the future development of Hayward. The full plan can be found at the link shown at the bottom of this slide. The plan's goals and policies are organized into various elements which are listed in the webpage. The Proposed Fiscal Year 26 CIP includes a number of projects which support these elements. I'll be going into further detail about some of the CIP projects on the following slides. The following slides will also have the goal or policy number from the 2040 general plan at the top of each slide under their respective element. Projects related to this element, goal, or policy number will be showcased on each slide. The Public Facilities and Services element establishes goals and policies to guide the overall provision of Hayward public facilities and services in Hayward. The South Hayward Youth and Family Center, which is a community center located on the corner of Tennyson and Russe Road, is a prime example of a CIP project which supports this element. The new Public Safety Center will also fit under this goal as well. Two additional examples include the Water Resource Recovery Facility, Switchgear Rehabilitation, and Phase 2 Improvement Projects, which are critical to ensuring the continued operation of future growth of our wastewater treatment facilities and services. The Mobility Element of the general plan serves to improve the mobility of people and goods throughout the city. The Mission Boulevard Phase 3 project is a key example of a CIP project that supports this element. It's the last phase of the Phase 3 Mission Boulevard Corridor Improvement Project and will include traffic calming measures, the addition of bicycle facilities, the installation of landscaping, monument sites, and other improvements. Some other examples include the Campus Drive Improvement Project, through which a series of traffic calming measures have been implemented in the stretch of campus drive between Second Street and Hayward Boulevard. Finally, the Main Street Complete Street Project and Safe Routes to School implementation are examples of a major CIP project in alignment with this element. These projects will improve pedestrian and bicycle facilities along Main Street and near Hayward schools to create safe and friendly environment for multimodal travel in Hayward. Several other mobility projects worth noting include the Pavement Rehabilitation and New Sidewalk Projects, which are completed every year and are intended to improve the city's pavement condition index as well as expand the city's sidewalk network. Staff has also an internal policy to allocate at least 10% of the overall paving budget to roads with a pavement condition index of less than 30. The table shows the city's historical PCI for the last 10 years. It is measured on a scale of 0 to 100, where 100 means newly paved road. The Natural Resources Element establishes goals and policies to protect and enhance the natural resources within Hayward. Our Recycled Water Project supports this element by combining or by providing treated wastewater to customers for irrigation purposes, which saves drinking water and reduces the volume of wastewater discharged to the bay. The city officially began delivering recycled water to approximately 31 Phase 1 customers in March 2022 and will begin developing a Phase 2 facilities plan to prepare for the expansion of the system. La Vista Park is another major project aligned with this element. The project is a 39-acre planned destination park located a quarter mile east of the intersection of Tennyson Road and Mission Boulevard in South Hayward. The design phase of the project is complete and bids for construction are currently in process. Additional examples include the 1.4 megawatt solar project at the Water Resource Recovery Facility through which the city is expanding its solar field. Efforts to transition the city's fleet to hybrid and EV models is another example as well as the citywide EV charging projects. These three items also directly align with the city's climate action plan, which have been adopted as part of the general plan. The Committee's Safety Element serves to enhance the programs and services of the Hayward Police and Fire Department. The new Public Safety Center project aims to develop the conceptual design of the new facility, including site assessment of two potential locations: the former California Air National Guard site and the former City Hall building on Foothill Boulevard. The scope of the work encompasses identifying space needs, conducting site analysis, design, and creating facility layout plans and cost analysis. The Land Use Element establishes goals and policies to enhance Hayward's neighborhoods and districts with an attractive mix of uses and amenities. One of the main goals within this element is the goal to create attractive corridors that serve people traveling through the city. Median landscaping improvements and the new Public Art Crosswalk Project are examples that meet this goal. The Hazards Element align with the drainage improvement projects at various locations. These projects will replace or repair damaged storm drain pipes due to old age or erosion from heavy rains which protect life and minimize property damage from potential flood hazards. Various parts of Hayward are subject to flooding during major storm events, including shoreline areas and upland areas located along streams, creeks, and drainageways. The CIP includes projects in the Water Improvement Fund for seismic improvements and upgrades which align with Goal 2, seismic and geological hazards. The city requires infrastructure and utility lines that cross faults to include design features to mitigate potential fault displacement and impacts and restore service in the event of a major displacement. The CIP also includes landscape, material, median, tree, and shrub replacement projects, and a hazardous tree removal and replacement project, both aligned with the community health and quality of life goals as well as the environmental justice element policy. These projects will maintain, enhance, and increase the city's urban forest as an environmental, economic, and aesthetic resource to improve Hayward residents' quality of life. Extensive tree canopies reduce the urban heat island effect and make streets and sidewalks more pleasant places to walk. Trees absorb carbon dioxide pollution and produce oxygen, which contributes to the improved air quality and human health. In addition to demonstrating the recommended CIP's consistency with the general plan, I would also like to take a brief moment to demonstrate its alignment with the city's strategic roadmap. The list of projects featured here are not exhaustive, but does demonstrate a nice snapshot of the priorities which the CIP projects support. For example, you can see that CIP projects tend to directly support the invest-in-infrastructure priority. However, many other projects support multiple priorities simultaneously. That concludes my presentation. It is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission finds that the Recommended CIP is consistent with the Hayward 2040 general plan. Myself and the team are now available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wolney, and thank you, Mr. Amiri. I do want to reiterate what you just said, that for the motion, instead of making a recommendation to City Council, the Commission is going to be finding whether or not the CIP is consistent with the general plan. So I just wanted to clarify that. And with that, we will open it up for Commissioner questions. This is the time for us to ask staff questions and we will reserve comments for later. Do any of my fellow Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Hammond?
Yes, Lowe. How does the city outreach to the public for so many different projects?
For different projects, we have different ways of outreach. For instance, I can give you an example. For a traffic calming project, we initially get in touch with the affected property owners. Like for instance, when we were talking about Patrick Avenue or right now Gadding Avenue, we send postcards to residents in the proximity of the project in the neighborhood of about 2,000 postcards, just informing them about the project and telling them that there is a website and there are other resources. And then after that, there are community meetings that we pick a school nearby or a community center nearby and invite residents to come and see the presentation, make comments, and so on. If need be, we will have multiple outreach and meetings with them to listen to their comments and concerns. And of course, they can get in touch with us by email and sending us written communication. And that's the way that we get in touch with them. And those are transportation projects are the most important ones. But then there are others too, that we send out flyers and establish a website to be able to communicate and provide information to the public.
Thank you. You'd be able to do that with all 400-plus projects?
I have a lot of staff. The department has more than 170 staff. We have about over 200 projects in the CIP for this year. About 100 of them are active right now and there are engineers, planners, management analysts, administrators that are working on the projects.
That's a lot of work. Thank you very much. Are all of these projects well-funded to see their completion?
Although the total budget for this year, as you heard, is about $161 million, only $3 million is funded by general fund. The other, under $4 million, is by internal funds. The rest, they are all funds by either enterprise funds like water or sewer or airport or by special funds, like different measures that we have: Measure B, Measure BB, vehicle registration fee, et cetera, et cetera, outside of general fund. And of course, there are some grants from local entities, from state and federal governments. There are some loans that fund these projects.
Okay. Is there a way, is the goal to try and not use any of the general fund for these projects?
The goal is to minimize it and I think we have done a good job over the years to contain the amount of money that is used by general fund.
Okay. And also, can you give some examples of the identified and unfunded capital projects? And how did you arrive at the figure of $709 million?
I would be happy to do that. One of the needs that we have is updating, rehabilitating our corporation yard on Soto Road. The corporation yard is decades old. It's extremely crowded. It's functionally obsolete, I would say. And there is an amount of $140 million that has been identified as the cost of rehab for the project and the funding has not been identified. As we go about doing preliminary investigation and such, part of it is also to look at different sources of funding. There are other examples I'd be happy to share with you if you like.
So I guess that falls under the public facility clustering. Is it possible that the new site for the new police station, which I guess we've been talking about for a while, could the corporate yard also be included in that project?
Well, the location for the police department, the two locations that we have identified, one is adjacent to the Fire Training Center on Wynton Avenue and the other one is the old Civic Center that used to be on Foothill. So those are the two areas. As far as the funding goes, we can combine and see what is the best way to fund those projects. But as far as location goes, the location for the corporation yard is on Soto. We are thinking about rehabbing that. There was an effort some years ago to see if we can do a joint project with the, with Hart and the School District, but that did not bear fruit. So right now, we are looking at our own corporation yard.
And this would not include daycare centers and?
No, no. Just things related to the function of corporation yard. The only thing that might be included there is the animal control that is there right now. The thinking is whether to keep it there or move it to closer to where the new Public Safety Center campus is going to be.
Okay, thank you. I guess I think that the Winton site would probably be maybe a better choice. Besides the seismic upgrades included in the staff report, are there any other projects that address preparing for a major earthquake?
I want to tell you that in Hayward, we have spent a lot of resources on improving our seismic safety and ability to withstand moderate earthquakes. Right after Loma Prieta, the city spent at that time forty million dollars looking at a lot of structures in terms of seismic safety. After that, I also looked into a number of pipelines that we have that cross the Hayward Fault. I think it was just under fifty locations, and we improved all of those. So now we have some money, some funds left. As we come across places that need that kind of seismic improvement, we provide it. And of course, let me just say that this building, as you know, is an example of seismic safety. It is sitting on base isolators and, you know, state-of-the-art facilities. It can withstand an earthquake with a magnitude of more than seven point oh on the Hayward Fault.
All right, thank you. And then to follow up on the water system. So after reviewing Goal PFS Three, which improves our water system, I see that we're replacing about twenty-six thousand feet of various types of pipe, including asbestos pipes. Being that asbestos is known to be a health hazard, can you tell me how much asbestos piping the still, the city still needs to replace?
Yes. We have about four hundred miles of water pipeline, if, if you want to focus on the water side. About five percent of that is basically cast iron that is very brittle and, you know, doesn't have longevity. We are focusing on replacing those. Seventy-five percent of our pipeline are asbestos cement, because that is what was in vogue when the city was being developed, and we use that kind of pipeline. The other twenty percent is either plastic or ductile iron or steel, welded steel for seismic performance. So over the years, we have a plan to replace a portion of asbestos cement pipeline. They are perfectly safe when they are in service. There is no issues with a wet pipe. Only when a pipe needs to be replaced, then we have to take precautions because of, you know, hazard that it poses to the environment and to people that are doing the work.
All right, thank you. And I also read that some of the replacement pipe will be PVC, also known to be a health risk. Is it possible, given the close proximity of Hayward to earthquake faults, that all of our water supply pipes be replaced with earthquake-resistant ductile iron pipe?
It is possible. It will be much more expensive. It will be several times more expensive to do that because of, one, the cost of material, and, second, the workmanship that it takes to install a pipe like that. Those pipes are reserved for areas that are in, in proximity to earthquake faults and zones and not everywhere.
But those would be the best, that would be the best system if we could replace it with everything?
Correct. It would be the best system, yes.
Is that a goal?
That is not currently the goal. The state-of-the-art is to use PVC pipe, plastic pipes, where they have shown to perform well.
And not to be a health hazard?
Absolutely not a health hazard, one hundred percent not a health hazard.
And just last question. I believe it's important for us to replace our city, city vehicles, along with the police and fire fleet. And I like that we're headed towards transitioning to hybrid EV models. It shows that you have fifteen percent, I guess is your goal for now. Is there, why not are we going beyond fifteen percent?
That's an excellent question, because the supply is very, very limited. Costs are much more than purchasing, you know, hybrid cars, and supplies are limited. We even wanted to purchase one of our pickup trucks that was EV, and the supply is limited. We know that Caltrans has a plan to purchase, and the state as a whole, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of these cars. It is very difficult for local agencies like us to compete and procure these, these vehicles.
All right, thank you very much. That's my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other Commissioner questions? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. So the, I kind of look forward every year to the CIP talk, because it is such an in-depth, and there's like, you can really get into the weeds on this. And so every year, when I get to ask questions, it helps me to clarify and dig into the weeds a little bit and give me a better understanding. So I really appreciate these, these moments. So I have a few questions. So I noticed that we were just talking about replacing the twenty-six thousand feet of pipes.
Yeah.
Do we have a percentage on how much we've completed? That might give me an idea of where we are financially on it?
So we combined, right now as we speak, we had combined a couple of years of replacing pipeline on the water side and the sewer side. It took us about a year and a half to do the construction. Right now, as I'm speaking, the water portion is one hundred percent done. The sewer portion is about ninety-five percent done. We are working on some, you know, small remaining items. Again, as we speak, we are working on a thirty-three million dollar project to replace more water pipeline and sewer pipeline. The design of the water pipeline for the new project is ninety percent done. The design of the sewer replacement is about sixty percent done. So this is a continuous effort to replace about two to two and a half miles of pipeline on the water side and on the sewer side every year. But we combine, you know, two, maybe three years of project for economies of scale to get, you know, more contractors to give us better bids.
Okay, that makes total sense. It's kind of like the Golden Gate Bridge. When you paint the end of it, you kind of start over, so we're just, economies of scale makes perfect sense there.
Exactly.
Very good. Okay, and then also, I know at the Water Resource Recovery Facility, we have our one point four, I think it is, solar system, megawatt system. And I don't believe we're using it anymore, because we have the, the gas digester system. Is that correct? We're not using it for that facility?
So we have a system, like you mentioned, a cogeneration system, that basically produces all of the electricity that is needed at the water recovery facility. And that facility is the biggest municipal user of power, electricity in the system. But the solar project is also very much needed, because the excess energy that is produced there is transmitted by, you know, PG&E to other facilities in the city, like City Hall, for instance, or other facilities that do not have solar. So we take advantage of that clean energy that we produce there. The, the one point six megawatt is already constructed, but I have a plan for an additional one point four megawatt. That's the one that you heard. But right now, we don't have the need for that. As soon as our water resource recovery improvements are in place, that need is created, and we will install that additional one point four megawatt.
Okay, so some of that, that additional solar array would go to supplement?
Correct.
The other one?
Correct, absolutely, yes.
And on the digester gas, I read that there's an added refinement that we can add to it, on, kind of on the, on the last phase of the process. Do, do we incorporate that refining process?
Absolutely, absolutely. We, we take that, that gas, and that gas is not one hundred percent methane. It has like sixty percent methane in it. And we have a refinery that basically refines that gas so that it can be used by an internal combustion engine that we have there to produce the electricity that I mentioned.
Excellent. Okay, good. And then a couple more questions?
Sure.
While we have you, we're gonna take advantage of it. The, the new Public Safety Center, I believe, will come from Measure K One, which is an extension of Measure C, right? Could you help me to understand how that gets funded through our? I don't, I don't think it goes out of our general fund at all. It comes straight to the CIP and various projects. Is, is that right?
Correct. So the cost of that project is, let's say, X amount. And we'll have to basically show that we have a source of funding to pay for that project. That source of funding can be Measure C, Measure K One. When we demonstrate to a financial entity that we have the source of funding, then we can borrow the amount of money that we need to construct the facility and then pay for it from, you know, a source like Measure C, Measure K One, or general fund as the case may be.
Yeah, I know. Oh, okay. And then we're currently looking at two right now spots. Are those piped in from Measure CK One? Or does any portion come from our general fund?
Nothing comes from general fund. So basically, one of the sites, the one that is next to the Fire Training Center, is owned right now by Airport, which is owned by the city, right? And the other one is the parcel that the city purchased some time ago, the Civic Center side, and that is owned by the city. So those are both owned either by the city general fund or by Airport.
Okay, great. I noticed regarding the mobility element, three point one, I read about it, but I was wondering if you can give me some examples that kind of correspond with what, what it's called, providing comfortable, convenient, and safe travel for? I'm wondering if there's, oh, I'm wondering if there's anything that is set in place in the verbiage for delivery vehicles under that, under that format?
So not particularly, just specifically for delivery vehicles, but any street that is open to, you know, trucks and other vehicles can be used for delivery vehicles. If you're talking about like vehicles that deliver cars to?
More, more so, we're kind of being flooded. It's ubiquitous, all of these Amazon and FedEx trucks, and they're always parking on the side. I'm just wondering if that comes into play in any of our calculations?
If, if we are near a distribution center, yes, they have to do a traffic study, show us, you know, what is their daily peak hour, weekend traffic, and mitigate the traffic that they generate by either paying a traffic mitigation fee or by doing, you know, street paving and other things to mitigate their work. Otherwise, there is no prohibition per se for a delivery like, you know, Amazon or FedEx to use public streets.
Okay. And then I, I did notice that a lot of these are listed as, let's say, it would be a policy or a goal. Could you help me clarify what, how we, how we are titling those? I understand what a goal is. It's a, it's a hope, and what we're striving for. But is there a reasoning for why we call one a goal and one a policy?
I would be guessing right now, but to me, a goal is something that the city aspires to get to. A policy is what we are going to be doing to get to, to that goal. And that would be, for us, for instance, would be that we want to have certain percentage of bike ways added every year so that in ten years, we get to a certain place. A policy would be that wherever we have the opportunity, allow for pedestrian access or bicycle access, and keep track of it and have metrics as to how we are, you know, progressing to reaching that goal.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodbody, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair Hardy. Director Amiri, I wanted to follow up on the Public Safety Center sites. Is the primary driver of those sites that it's because they're city-owned properties? Was that the only consideration or criterion when selecting those sites?
It was not. The, the reason for the selection of, for instance, the site that is owned by Airport is that the safety center would be adjacent to the newly built, the Fire Training Center and Fire Station Six. There is synergy there to have two safety facilities adjacent to one another. So that was a reason for that. The other one was that it is a location that is in the proximity, at least, to the downtown. And there were some, you know, reasons for selecting that. City has other properties that we own, and they don't, they are not suitable for that kind of use.
I know that we are voting on whether the recommendations are aligned with the?
General Plan.
The CIP, yeah, the general plan. And I, and I will support it. I wanted to just ask a couple of questions about the Public Safety Center. Is, in considering the sites, it seems that the, the, the site at the Airport property seems kind of far away from, from the center of the city and access to South Hayward and in downtown and whatnot. And I'm wondering if the city has considered the Sears site at Southland Mall? And the reason I was looking at that is because it's directly across where the current police station is and that it seems a little more central to downtown and perhaps South Hayward. And to the extent that, you know, them using a, an existing building, and I'm looking at the two-story building that used to be the Sears outlet on the, sort of the east side of the, of the mall, would there be any, any savings or anything that the city would consider in terms of saving additional taxpayer funds and using an existing site?
So, so that's an excellent question. The location was something that we looked into to some extent initially. Unfortunately, the ownership of that property is so complicated and so convoluted that it would have taken a lot of effort, a lot of years, to untangle and get anywhere. Otherwise, that would have been, you know, a place to, to, to consider. Otherwise, that would have been, you know, a place to consider. As far as reusing an existing building goes, there are so many, you know, special considerations when it comes to safety and access to a structure like a police building that unfortunately, an existing building like that would not lend itself to reuse for that purpose.
And then in terms of the, I saw that Measure B, Measure BB funds in the presentation. So at what point does the Measure K1 allocation and funding come into play? Is it when the Measure B and BB funds are expended? I didn't see any reference to Measure K1 funds in relation to the CIP.
So, absolutely. I would be happy to. Measure C was passed in 2014 and had 20-year term, so it would expire by 2034. And Measure K1 basically extended that expiration by another 20 years. So now the funding is going to not expire in 2034, but continue through 2054. And that would allow the city, as I said, to consider, you know, funding different projects using Measure CK1. The two measures that you mentioned, Measure B and BB, those are Alameda County measures that are dedicated to things like roadway improvements or sidewalk improvements. Those measures are going to continue and are restricted for funding the type of roadway construction or sidewalk construction, lighting, and things of that nature, completely separate from Measure C/K1. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes, thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Goodbody?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other Commissioner questions? If not, I have just a few questions. So I also enjoy this presentation each year. Just wondering if there were something that a community member wanted to see next year for the 2027 to 2036. Are there opportunities for community to give input around, for example, traffic calming or something like that in their neighborhood? Are there opportunities to weigh in on potential new projects? And if so, like, when and where would they be able to do that?
Absolutely, there is an opportunity to do that. Some of the projects that you see before you were initiated by our residents. They basically contacted the city and, you know, advocated for their neighborhood, and you see improvements there. There are many examples I can give you, but one of them is Campus Drive, that they wanted improvements done, and now the improvements have been installed. Next year, we are going to do sidewalk improvements there to complete that. Orchard Avenue is another example. There are many examples. They can get in touch with the city just using Access Hayward, you know, and comment. They can call us. As you know, there are council committees that meet on a regular basis. One of them is infrastructure. It has been combined with Airport now. The other one is sustainability. Those are the two that Public Works Department staffs, and on a regular basis, we have meetings and people come and comment. And absolutely, we take those comments and act on them.
Thank you. I did have a question about a specific project, and it was the funding for the Russell City Engagement in Art. And so I just, I'm just trying to understand, just looking at the online portal, which is great. And if this is too detailed, just let me know. But I just noticed that it says revenue sources that contribute to this project include citywide funds of $20,000. But then the amounts listed for prior years in this fiscal year are different than those amounts. Can you just speak in general for projects, kind of like what I'm seeing there when I'm looking at these funding amounts and what that means?
Just generally speaking, for a project like that, for instance, there are different sources of funding. One would be, like you mentioned, city contribution from general fund. And then there are other ways of funding a project like that. Requesting and getting a grant would be, you know, another. We had a situation that one of the facilities in Hayward was compelled to pay, you know, certain amount of money to the city for something that, you know, had occurred. So that is a source of funding that can be used for something like, you know, you mentioned.
Thank you for the clarification. My next question is about, also on the website, in the introduction section, there's a transmittal letter. And so I did take a look at that. Could you just maybe explain the purpose of this and when it goes to city council? Or if it does, or more about that?
So, basically, our capital improvement program is a big binder, or, you know, you have seen it on the website. This is basically, in summary, to explain what it is that, you know, we are presenting to council, what are some of the examples of projects that we are doing, and so on. Basically, an introduction to the capital improvement program that is before them.
So this hasn't gone... I know that this is coming up for city council. You said probably in May.
Correct.
But the letter is already here, and it already says the planning commission's seen it. So is this just kind of like, it's prepared and ready to go?
Exactly, exactly. So the first step is to come to planning commission on the 23rd of this month. The same thing is going to be presented to the council infrastructure and airport committee, and after that, it's going to go to council, I believe, on May 6th, but it could be a different date.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, since it looked like it's happened already, and I know that it has not.
It's a draft.
So thank you for that.
Sure.
Okay. And my final question is about the elements of the general plan that we were discussing during the presentation, and just how the different parts of the CIP relate to that. There were a few elements of the general plan that were not mentioned, and so I just wanted to bring them up. I'm sure there are many things that touch on those, but we didn't mention economic development, housing, or education and lifelong learning. And so I just wanted to know if there's a reason those weren't mentioned, or if the other projects just have precedence right now?
If I look at, like I mentioned, over 200 projects that are in the CIP, we can find projects that support those elements. For brevity, we did not include them, but there are, you know, ways of connecting some of these projects.
Thanks. Thank you.
One example that I can give you, for instance, is that we are doing a lot of safe routes to schools, right? So that it's related to the educational element by providing a safe access to schools for children and others.
Thank you for the example. I was sure that there were many things in there and actually saw some of the things, but since it wasn't specifically stated, and that is our charge for the night, I just wanted to bring it up. So thank you for sharing that.
Completely understandable. Thank you.
Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you, Chair, for allowing me one last question with shortness in mind. I noticed at Jackson and Safeway, there last year was a new Tesla charging station built, and I wonder, where did all these people go before? Because every time I'm there, it seems like 90% full. My question is, does the city have an actual plan on where they would like charging stations? Or do we leave it up to the business? And also, do we have an incentive program or any kind of complimentary fee issues with them to help them at various locations?
So the answer is twofold. The installation that you saw at Safeway is a private installation for customers, you know, that are shopping there, or they are using the gym there. They pay and charge their cars. The city also has a plan for installing these charging stations. As you know, we are a member of Ava Energy that basically procures clean energy and supplies it to us. We are in partnership with them to install public charging stations. The location that we are working on right now is our municipal parking lot 4, which is between B and C Street behind AT&amp;T Building. And that is going to provide 20 charging stations. We are in discussion with Ava to use that as our first installation.
Okay. And one of the reasons I ask is because without a kind of a thought-out plan, I'd hate to have a charging station that really bogs down a community or an environment. When a private entity comes with us, comes to you for a request, are we taking that into consideration, or is it pretty much always a go-for-it?
So I just want to be very clear that that installation is on private property. They are using their own parking spaces, privately owned parking spaces, to do that. If a private entity contacts the city for using city public parking spaces, then we have to have a conversation with them to see, you know, how they are going to operate and how our residents are going to benefit from that, aside from just paying and getting their vehicle charged.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And not seeing any other hands questions, so I will close Commissioner questions, and we will move on to public comments. Ms. Allen, are there any public comments online?
There are no public commenters at this time.
Great. Commissioner Goodbody, are there any members of the public who wish to speak at your location?
No.
Thank you, then. We will close public comments and move on to Commissioner comments. Do any Commissioners... Commissioner Lo?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. This was really, really helpful and excellent presentation by both of you. The, this is the, the website is very complicated, and so sometimes, some portions of it, you can get lost and it can be a little confusing. However, I will say that I appreciate how difficult it is to condense this amount of material and trying to make it digestible for our residents. So I appreciate that you did that, and I do think, based upon the voluminous number of projects and all of the things that you have to put into the website, I think that it is well done, and I appreciate it. I still think people will have questions about it, but as long as they can contact city staff to get that clarification, I think the website is giving, providing the information that needs to provide to the residents. It's very nice to see the programs that the city is working on for the betterment of Hayward residents, and we just appreciate, you said, 170 staff members. We appreciate every single one of you.
Thank you.
And I would like to move to find that the capital improvement program is consistent with the Hayward 2040 general plan.
Do we have a second?
Sure, a second.
All right. We have motion from Commissioner Lo, a second from Commissioner Myers. Do any other Commissioners' comments? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Director, especially thank you and your staff for all the awesome work that you've done. I mean, Mission Boulevard, Main Street, those are just amazing projects. All the people behind the scenes making those happen is just awesome. It's so long time happening. It's so beautiful that's coming. And I would argue that those projects are both about economic development, because those are going to help promote the businesses along those corridors. So it's just amazing work. The only point I'd like to make, and this applies, I think universally, to probably all California cities, is that, you know, there's a lot of folks that want to see traffic calming, and we see traffic calming appear in this report. And I would argue that something has gone wrong in society in terms of how people drive. I don't have an answer for why that is, but I can say that, you know, just because somebody or a neighborhood is angry that somebody's speeding, that doesn't mean that we, as a city, need to go in there and try to engineer a solution to calm traffic. When we do these things, you know, we're really penalizing the 95% or the 99% of people that are actually following the rules. And I'd just like to point out that I think the local road safety plan that Hayward completed illustrates that 75% of Hayward's fatal and severe injury crashes occur on just 14% of the roadway network. So I really would encourage our policymakers and our leaders to really think about this and really use a data-driven strategy about where there are challenges and how can we really promote safety. And let's look at other strategies beyond just trying to engineer ourselves out of traffic calming, because I think that's just a fool's errand. It's going to waste a lot of taxpayer dollars. So thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodbody, do you have a comment?
No, I don't.
Thank you. I would also just like to thank staff for all the work that you do and for this presentation as well. I appreciate the website. I agree, I was clicking all around, trying to figure things out, but I really appreciate the search feature. And I actually forgot about the one that was demonstrated for us tonight, which would be really helpful, too. I did the one where you do like the Ctrl+F. It's a different screen, but yeah, that also worked for me. So I just really appreciated the ability to do that and look for specific streets or projects or just different things I was interested in. I do actually want to echo some of what Commissioner Stevens just said. I actually really agree. One of the things that I've noticed where I live, which is in the Tennyson Alquire area, there were some street improvements done for bike lanes, but it's led to many, many cars being hit because the cars park away from the curb now. And so it's been a wondering, like, well, how do we get involved as a community to fix this, even though it was done for such a meaningful purpose? So I just always encourage community involvement, just to give feedback as much as possible. And I'm really glad there are avenues to do that with this. Just, you know, if we have things that we would like to see. It's actually caused my car insurance rates to go up quite a bit, although everything's going up anyway. So I just wanted to say that and definitely encourage community, if anyone is watching or anything, to get involved. Are there any other Commissioner comments? No? Not, we have a motion on the floor. So can we please have a roll call for a vote?
Commissioner Frank O'Cloughson, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. And that, it passes, and we will move on to our Commission reports for the evening. And first, oral report on planning and zoning matters.
I just wanted to say thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission, for your comments and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I don't have a lot to update, just a couple of quick notes. So we have a scheduled, our next scheduled PC meeting, which is currently on the books for April 24th, will likely be canceled. We will be sending out that cancellation notice next week. That's due to lack of the agenda items, but we do have at least one and possibly two projects for Commission consideration at our first meeting in May, which would be May 8th. So that meeting, as well as probably the second meeting in May, both have something scheduled, and we will continue to have meetings on those dates. I also wanted to just kind of promote a couple of community activities. So in April, just obviously wanted to wish everyone a Happy Easter, which is coming on April 20th. Earth Day, we've been talking a lot about sustainability, so I would be remiss if I didn't comment on the Earth Day festivities. Earth Day, we've been talking a lot about sustainability, so I would be remiss if I didn't comment on the Earth Day festivities. Earth Day is actually on April 27th, on, on April 22nd, which is on a Tuesday. But we're actually having an annual citywide cleanup and a community fair, which is going to be held at Weeks Park on Saturday, April 26th. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's going to have some sustainability-themed booths scattered about. There is an opportunity for volunteers. If you would like to sign up to do the volunteer, you can go on the city's webpage and sign up for that. Those that do decide to volunteer will get a ticket for a free lunch that's going to be catered by one of our local restaurants, which is wonderful. So I would just encourage anyone that is interested and available on Saturday, the 26th, to go to Weeks Park and be a part of that wonderful event. And that's it for my announcements this week.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner reports? Not seeing any. So again, our next meeting is scheduled for April 24th, but if we do not meet then, we will meet again on May 8th. And with that, our meeting is adjourned at 8:13 PM.
...